I'm calling to order the Tuesday, July 14th, meeting of the Corte Madera Planning Commission. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Mr. Wolf, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Mr. Bundy. Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo?
Great, okay. So, we have some commissioners to swear in. I understand it. That would be Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, that would be me. I was muted. Thank you, Chair Chase. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to chair, swear in Commissioners Bandell, Bundy, and Metcalf for new two-year terms commencing July 1st, 2020, and expire June 30th, 2022. Sounded like Commissioner Bundy dialing in. Are you... We clear to go with the swearing in? Okay. For those of you who have a printout, you can follow along. I'll read pieces of it, and all three of you can repeat simultaneously. This is the oath of office. I state your name.
I, Robert Bundy.
I, Phyllis Metcalf.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Annunisha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, it's time to elect the Chair and Vice Chair of the Commission.
I would like to nominate Peter to continue as Chair of the Commission.
Second.
I'd second that.
All right. You want me to take the vote on it at this point? Or you want to just do it all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Thank you. Now nominations for Vice Chair. I would nominate Phyllis Metcalf for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor again, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's great. All right. Tonight, at this moment, we are now opening the meeting for public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something that you'd like to speak to that's not on the agenda, you have three minutes to speak. So we'll open up the meeting to public comment. Tracy, do you have any hands up for public comment?
Let's see, I don't see any hands up. Let me check, see if we have any emails. No, no emails either.
Okay. Well, we'll just let the other shoe drop, and then we'll say public comment is closed at this time. With that said, we move directly to our hearing item for tonight. This is 38 Birch Avenue, a major design review application to add 723 square foot to a second level and to add 241 square feet to the first level of a 1,796 square foot, single-story home at 38 Birch Avenue. File number PL 2020-0013DRC. So here we are for this, and I believe, Martha, this is your presentation.
Yes. Can everyone see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the Commission. This evening, you will be considering a design review application for a new second level and also in addition to the first floor of an existing home at 38 Birch Avenue. The project site is located within the Madera Gardens neighborhood. Madera Gardens consists of single-family homes and two lagoons. Located to the north, south, and east of the project site are single-family homes, and located to the west is Lagoon Two.
Sorry to interrupt, Martha. I just, I don't, I just want to make sure that all the commissioners can see your screen. I'm not viewing it right now.
No one's seen it?
No.
Okay, there we go.
That's working. Okay, let's try again.
Yeah, you just need to turn it into full screen for the presentation.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, so located to the north, south, and east of the project site are single-family homes, and to the west is Lagoon Two. And the site is accessed by Birch Avenue. The project site is Zoned R1 Medium Density Residential, and this table shows the various development standards and what the existing condition is and what is proposed. The proposed project meets all of the development standards in the R1 district, including setbacks, lot coverage, floor area, height, and parking. The project site is approximately 116 feet in length, and it has a width at the front of the property of approximately 70 feet, and the width papers to approximately 25 feet in the rear. The project site is located in the floodplain, and for properties in the floodplain, the structure is required to be raised one foot above the base flood elevation if improvements equal or exceed 50% of the value of the existing structure. And as part of the project, the applicant submitted an appraisal report and a cost estimate of the construction, and the cost estimate was approximately 40% of the appraised value. Therefore, they were not required to raise the structure. And the image on the right is the existing site plan. The existing residence is shown in gray. And there's also a deck that's accessed from the rear of the property, which you can see here. On the left is the proposed site plan, and the existing addition is shown in gray. This slide shows the proposed floor plan. The existing habitable area is 1,340 square feet, and it consists of three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a kitchen, and a living room. And as part of the project, the applicant is proposing a 241-square-foot first-level addition, which is shown in gray. And this is proposed to be a dining room. The applicant is also proposing to reduce the size of the existing garage from 456 square feet to 420 square feet. And this is to provide a staircase, which will provide access to the upper level. And the existing garage will continue to meet the parking standard and provide for two parking spaces in the garage. The proposed second floor includes 723 square feet, and it includes a bonus room, a half-bath, hallway, master bathroom, master closet, and master bedroom. And the proposed addition is located over the northern portion of the project site or of the existing residence, and the location was chosen in part to preserve the view of Mount Tam from the residence located across the street. This shows the existing and proposed east elevation, which is the front elevation and what is visible from Birch Avenue. The existing elevation consists of the garage and the entry door and the porch. And shown on the left is what is being proposed. The applicant is proposing to modify the windows on the front lower elevation, and the size will be increasing slightly. And the proposed second story will consist of three windows, and there are new ridge lines proposed, which runs in an east-west direction. And the height of the proposed structure is 24 feet 2 inches. This shows the existing and proposed north elevation. This elevation is closest to the neighbor to the north at 42 Birch Avenue, and the addition is located approximately seven feet to the northern property boundary and approximately 20 feet to the existing residence at 42 Birch Avenue. The applicant is proposing three windows in the first story in the new proposed dining room, and four windows are proposed on the second level. And this consists of an egress window in the bonus room and a window in the hallway, the stairway, and then two windows in the hallway. And three of the four windows have a sill height of five feet to minimize privacy impact. And the proposed height is 23 feet 6 inches. This slide shows the existing and proposed west elevation, which is the rear elevation. Extensive glass doors and windows are proposed on this elevation to take advantage of the views of the lagoon and Mount Tam Apia. On the lower level, two four-panel sliding glass doors are proposed in addition to a two-panel sliding glass door. And on the second level, a large window is proposed in the master bedroom, and the height is 23 feet 6 inches. The south elevation is located approximately 40 feet from the southern property boundary. The applicant is proposing a sliding glass door on the lower level in the dining room addition, and then three windows are proposed on the second level. And the height of the addition is 23 feet 6 inches. As part of the project, the applicant is proposing to modify the existing color and materials. The existing residence is light gray with white accents, which includes the garage, the entrance, and the shutters. The existing roof material is metal. And as part of the project, the applicant is proposing to modify the roof to dark gray composite roofing. They also propose to remove the aluminum siding on the front and replace with stucco. And also, all of the window frames, which are white, are proposed to be modified with bronze. And the applicant proposes to paint the structure cream with black accents. And a photocopy of this materials and color board was provided with your staff report. As part of the project, the applicant conducted neighborhood outreach. Prior to submitting the application with the town, the property owners provided their neighbors with the plans, and they submitted a petition of support that was signed by all of the surrounding neighbors. In addition, the neighbors to the south, 73 Lakeside, and to the north, 42 Birch, in addition to 85 Lakeside, provided letters of support. And the petition of support and letters of support were included as an attachment to your staff report. The map on the left shows all of the existing second stories within a quarter mile of the project site. Within a quarter mile, there are 341 properties and 49 two-story homes comprising just over 14%. And you'll notice that there are a larger number of second stories in the northern portion of Madera Gardens compared to the southern portion. This slide also shows the two-story homes located in closest proximity to the project site. The upper right-hand corner shows 73 Lakeside Drive, which is located south of the project site. And this is the view from Birch Avenue. And on the lower right is 37 Birch Avenue, which is located across the street. And here are four additional two-story homes that are located in proximity, all on Birch Avenue. And these pictures and map were also included as an attachment to your report. And for all design review projects that are approved, required design review findings must be made. And there is a discussion of these findings in both the staff report and the resolution, and staff is able to make all of the design review findings. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the resolution approving the major design review application for 723-square-foot second-level addition and a 241-first-level addition at 38 Birch Avenue. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Martha on this application? Dr. Bundy?
Yes. Just in clarification of the 50% rule for raising the house, is that 50% of the value of the home? Or 50% of the value of the home and the lot?
It's 50% of the value of the home.
Okay, thank you. The other thought that I had, which is probably for subsequent meeting in regard to view ordinances, is the issue of how do we evaluate a view from a second story on an original, single-story home when somebody else wants to put a second story on that and block their view? This doesn't apply in this particular case. They worked it out nicely with the neighbor, and the views are not impacted. But in thinking about this case, we should consider that in the future when we discuss views.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions for staff from you?
No.
Okay. Looks like Mr. Rizzo has a question.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Bundy on that. You know, sometimes these additions get pushed over to the side, and not such the perfect place for shadows on the neighbors to the north. But I am definitely glad that it was worked out between the neighbors. You know, I kind of, we'll go into that a little bit later. But the question regarding what is the room behind the garage on 41 Birch? Do we know? There's a garage in, like, the one that's going to be in shadow.
I believe that's the kitchen.
That's the kitchen. I know we got a letter of support, but I'm just clarifying. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Margaret?
In the staff report, there was an explanation of why the addition on the second story was going to be moved all the way over to be exactly lined up with the wall so that the view wasn't blocked. Which, whose view on the map? Could you show me whose view was potentially going to be blocked by an addition?
So it is 37 Birch Avenue, which is located across the street, and it's the picture on the lower right-hand corner. And it's the view from that window, which I believe is a bathroom window.
Is that the only view in that house that is the view of Mount Tam?
I believe so.
I did drive by there, and I noticed that that house is for sale now.
Correct. I believe it went on the market last week, and the property owners may have more information on that than I do.
Okay. Is there a, if and when that house is sold, is there any obligation of the new, of the property owner, of the applicant, to tell the property owner or the new property owner what they're doing? I just, is there any obligation there?
There's not an obligation. And that may be a question to direct to the property owners if they have intentions of speaking to the future neighbors when they move into the neighborhood.
Margaret, I might say that there's no guarantee the house would sell, although it's probably very likely it will sell. This is a strange market. But we're at one point in time, and what happens after this is not pertinent, really, to our review. I would think that. Adam, you could follow up with that.
I just think that, I don't know, in some way, it might affect the property value or price. I'm not sure, you know, exactly, but it seems to me it's a factor, that's all.
Wouldn't the story poles indicate to anyone looking at the home, seeing story poles across the street, that a second story is going up?
Yes, you're right, but within a certain period of time, those story poles have to come down, I think, by the municipal code. And so...
Generally, story poles are removed after the appeal period.
So to further your commentary, I believe it's incumbent upon a real estate agent to inform the buyer about property sale and property in the neighborhood. I'm not quite sure how that's stated in the state real estate code. But, you know, they do produce comps, and they do produce some information about the neighborhood. It would be, I think, appropriate and incumbent upon that agent to tell the buyer about what's going on. That's my response. So, Adam, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I would agree. I don't know what the specific sort of requirements for real estate brokers from their ethical responsibilities that they have as a profession, particularly as it pertains to proposed projects. But in my view, it would be a responsible real estate agent would be notifying, as part of the disclosures, they would be identifying this as a proposed project that is in the process of gaining some planning entitlements.
Sure.
But I don't have a firm yes or no that that has to happen or not.
Margaret, any further questions?
No, I have nothing else.
Okay. Anyone else have any further questions? Phyllis?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, we will ask the applicant if they're going to make a presentation, to make their presentation, or whoever that might be.
I'm not on.
So...
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Yep, Deborah's going to start her video. This is the architect making her presentation. She just needs one moment, Peter, to get the video on here.
Okay.
Start my, can you... Hello?
We hear you, Deborah.
Oh, hi. I guess I'd be curious, as, I mean, I think Martha did an excellent job. When we looked at the views from the street, we could see Mount Tam from across the street. I show pictures of that. I don't know if they're in your presentation, Martha, but there are, you know, pictures of what you look at right across, from right across the street. And if the addition were to the left or in the middle of the house, it would take out a vision, you know, what you see of Mount Tam. It's not a huge, like, Mount Tam, but it is, it is something that you see and that helps orient you. So we didn't want to block that. The other thing is, even if, you know, the primary view is out the backyards to the lake and Mount Tam from the neighbor at the north. So even with our second-story addition close to them, they're oriented, so they have, and either been better full-on view of the lake and Mount Tam. So our addition doesn't really, won't really affect their views because you don't, their view is not off to the left toward my client's house. It's a straight-on view. So, and then, so we really consider the view and what would affect our neighbors a lot. And I'm trying to think, are there any other questions about why we did what we did? Because I think Martha's presentation was, as far as the shadow, when I looked at the shadows, I was really happy with them because I didn't see massive shadowing of the house next door because of the orientations, except for during, I think, the winter. There was one time when there was a shadow, but a lot of times, the house next door was not affected by shadow during most of the year and most of the times. So, you know, we discussed what I would present, and we decided I wouldn't make a PowerPoint presentation, but we'd just be able to answer any other questions. And so those are the questions that were sort of implied. And so even though there's only a bathroom across the street, you do view the Mount Tam from the street. And I think in terms of property values, even though it's not pleasant to have construction going on, the improvement of property only adds to neighboring properties, especially one this well-thought-out. And it's not, it's not a monstrous addition. It's kind of neat and contained and just a little pop-up there. So, anybody?
All right. Deborah, I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions for you, since you've made yourself open to questions. So first, I'll ask Commissioner Metcalf if she has any questions for you.
No, I don't, because I think it's been well-planned, and it looks like it fits into the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for Deborah?
Yes. I think the overall design of the second story is quite nice. I wonder how it sort of fits into the existing roof lines, however. And a number of the homes in this area have some unusual roof lines, and this one has the sort of lower roof on the edge that I've always wondered about when I've been in that neighborhood and seen some of the different roof lines, what they tried to create with that design aesthetic at the time. And with the second story, I think it really makes it look a little peculiar to see those double roof lines. And I wondered if you and the homeowner had thought about, since you're doing a new roof anyway, extending the roof line out another foot to eliminate that second lower roof line on the whole.
We just discussed doing that, and I don't, if you, it didn't show up on the drawing, but that second lower roof, we're going to get rid of that second low, that existing lower roof that wraps around the front of the house and is only at the front of the house, is being removed. So the lines of the second story will not have that kind of double roof that you're, I assume that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, we're getting rid of that.
Oh, very good. The other question I had in regard to the paint color, the paint color of the house looked very nice. I wondered about the black trim and how that was, was that going to be too much of a contrast? And had you thought about a different color on that?
Well, I think it's not that unusual to have these lighter-colored houses with these darker windows. So minor modifications might be done, but I think this was a client choice from other things that they had seen. Martha, I don't, there was in your drawing set a little picture next to the elevations that shows the wood shingles on the front, I mean, the wood shutters and the wood entryway, a little picture of what we were trying to imitate. I don't know if you see that. It's on, I think it's page four of the drawings. Let me just check.
It's also included as an attachment, too, as well. There's a picture of the natural wood paneling that's proposed for the shutters and the entry door.
So, but the natural, but above that is that elevation. It's on A4. Am I wrong? Maybe I'm wrong.
No, you're not. It is A4.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's a small thing, easy to miss, but it's above the proposed floor. Above, there's a small picture that didn't really come out, but hopefully you can see it. But they were kind of looking at, you know, white and, you know, there's accents of black. So I don't think that the black on the windows is going to be overbearing. It's just a, an accent color.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Yes, Phyllis?
I wanted to reassure Bob that using the black trim with the off-white is very in this year. It's being used quite a lot, both on exteriors and interiors. And it really looks stunning when you see it. Very effective look.
I trust your judgment, Phyllis.
Thank you. Thanks, since I just had a bathroom painted that way today. The painter left about an hour ago.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for the architect?
Yes, I was wondering if you had explored a few more of the visual bulk tools like breaking up some of the exterior finishes as it wraps around. I see that there might be some wood on the lower level, under the front windows. And then as we, as it hits the garage, it kind of stops. And then that's where your, your major mass is on the back and on the side elevation. Also, some other techniques with maybe, maybe adding a deck for that master bedroom, since you guys are, I know that's not facing the, the community, but definitely would help breaking up, break up that second story as it looks really tall because it's narrow.
I think the owner for, you know, I see what you're saying, and I do, I have worked on houses where we've broken things up like that. But I think we, the owner preferred it just a simpler. Nobody will see the back, really. It's, it's only, that is, there's a lagoon back there. So nobody sees that elevation anyway, and the owner was happy with that. Personally, I kind of like the verticality. I wouldn't, I like it because the whole house is so horizontal. But the owner is preferring to have the whole house be stucco. He's getting rid of that metal, or they are getting rid of the metal, what it looks like, some, I guess it looks like horizontal siding. They just prefer that the whole thing be stucco and simpler. And it's not like it's a really massive community center, so I just, I mean, I can see what you're saying, but those items are also cost items. So they're trying to, you know, get, right now, they, they only have one place for sitting, so they're trying to get an additional sitting room. And, you know, they, they need a home office, so, you know, they're just trying to get more space.
So Deborah, is, is the garage door going to be painted white or black with the trim color?
I believe it's white. But is the owner on this call?
Yeah, so we're on.
Great.
That is something that.
We'll get you in a moment. We'll let.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm not, can I just find out from them what they're saying about the color?
We'll come back to that in a moment, then. Do you have any other questions?
No, I just, I just wanted to bring that up because I know Dr. Bundy was concerned about the trim color and it would, might affect his decision if there was a big massive color in the front that didn't jive with him.
So with that said, Margaret, do you have any questions for the architect?
Yeah, there's also the possibility of having the garage door be a natural wood, which would complement the shutters.
Margaret, any question?
I just want to ask, if the addition, the second story addition were moved over, so it wasn't quite so unbalanced, that would, that would be blocking the neighbor's view?
It blocks the view and there's some, you know, structural, it makes a lot of structural sense to stack things. And once you start, don't stack things, you have point loads that make the structure have to be much bigger if you're not going over a wall, which sometimes you can't. If you're close to a, you know, if your existing house is within a setback, then you have to move the second floor over. But we kind of left it there because it didn't seem, like, because of view and shade and structural simplicity. And, you know, the front of the, the front of the building is stepped back, and that's going to be what the neighbors see. And the side is, is just the side. And I guess it's, you know, in my opinion, it doesn't look unbalanced or too tall, you know, I, but everybody has their, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that it's wildly unbalanced or wildly too tall or wildly too big to not have, to have just one material. But that's my opinion. I can see why any of those things can be argued. But a house has a certain plan that calls for a certain plan around that plan. And with residential, an existing residential house, that's kind of where you have to start from. And that's what, you know, that's how the plan was generated and the forms were generated. Unless cost and, is no, is no issue and views and neighbor views and shadows aren't any issue.
Okay. All right. I think, is that it, Margaret, from your end?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So at this point then, let's let the applicant make their presentation or their statements to us, and then they can answer any questions about the color. So, hello there, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all for having us tonight and agreeing to review our design proposal. We put a lot of thought into what we did and we ensured that neighbors knew right away that we were potentially going to go up. It's a tight community here. We all know each other. You know, the next-door neighbors, the across-the-street neighbors. And when we were presented with some concerns about window height or roof height, we adjusted those and made sure that we weren't encroaching on any shadow issues or privacy issues. So we are very, we believe that we are really thoughtful and, and we know that our neighbors, some of our neighbors wrote in letters of support for us as well. But yeah, we, we really want to keep our neighbors happy. That's very, very important to us. We also had the challenge of staying under the FEMA 50% rule. So there's lots of things that we could have done but wanted to stay under that 50% of the dwelling values that we didn't have to raise the home, which would be not only a huge cost for us as a family, but also takes the house a lot higher and, not an eyesore, but just tall. Very, very big. Yeah, and we wanted to stay within the typical houses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and both of us are, you know, we're working at home now. You know, so getting another office would be good. Both Mary and I worked in this room together, so. Two little boys and 1,300 square feet. Pandemic, it's kind of tight. We don't know how long this is going to last for, so. You know, this is good timing on, on putting an addition on our house. Appreciate your generous time and consideration for our project.
And in terms of the color, I wanted to just say that the colors that we chose and put on the materials board turned out a lot stronger than the anticipated color, which is more of a cream color and a light gray trim, which is, the trim is very subtle and small. The primary trim will be that natural wood. And we could even use that to break up that big side and have a, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm using the wrong terminology. Please excuse me. But, you know, just a border above the windows and maybe out in the back area where one of the commissioners had suggested a deck. We could even put, you know, a border there of natural wood. But we do want to keep it a little creamier than what the materials board came off as. That was a little bit starker white than I had anticipated.
All right. Anything else that you'd like to contribute before I ask the commissioners if they would like to ask any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Margaret, do you have any questions for the applicant?
So. Did you, did you call me Peter?
I did, yes.
So what color was the garage door going to be?
So we were thinking the garage door would also be that natural wood color.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rizzo?
Oh, no. So, so like a light gray, you're thinking, with the, with the oil-rub bronze windows?
Yeah, so the actual color that I've been looking at is called an off-black. So it's very, it's a soft black, dark, dark gray.
But the garage door, the garage door is going to be a natural wood, which really does look great with the natural wood shutters. I've seen it, and actually, they, their friend did it, who was another one of my clients, and it looks wonderful, really pretty.
I don't have a trouble, I don't have a problem with the colors. They, there's a lot of farmhouse-style houses going up right now, and so I agree that it'll all work together in the end.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bundy, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
All right. Mark, Mrs. Metcalf, Ms. Metcalf, Phyllis, do you have any questions?
One that's slightly off the design, but I've been curious going through the plans. Where did you move the furnace to? In the back of the garage was the furnace and the water and the washer and dryer, and you see where everything else was moved over, but the furnace has disappeared. Is it under the stairs?
Exactly.
Yeah.
New compact equipment, yeah. That's great. So at this point then, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment on this item. So we will open the public comment, and I'll ask Tracy to tell us if there's anyone with their hand up or any emails that have come in.
Peter, thank you. For those attendees, you can, to comment tonight, you can use the raise hand feature in your Zoom meeting window, or you can send an email to publiccomment@tcmail.org. Again, that was publiccomment@tcmail.org. And I do see one raised hand. I'm going to unmute you. This is Corinne Cashin. Go ahead, Corinne.
Hi, this is Corinne Cashin. We live next door at 42 Birch, and we're the house, I think, we're talking about with the studies, the only one that'll be affected, and we don't think it'll be affected very much. And we love the Coonies. We think they did an awesome job with the renovation. We're really excited to see it go up, so we're definitely on board with it. We're excited for them.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Anyone else that you see as yet?
There is an additional raised hand. I'm going to unmute Carl Spursum.
Okay.
Carl, you may have to unmute yourself as well.
There we go. Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's Carl Spursum. We live in 73 Lakeside Drive on the other side of the house, and we are in full agreement with the design of the property. I think it's a great improvement. We like the Coonies a lot, and I think they've done a great job designing this. So appreciate all your comments tonight, and we are in full support of the project.
Thank you, Carl. All right, that's great. No one else has yet and no email?
I don't see any additional raised hands. And Peter, there is no email.
Okay, I know it's awful short, but we will then close the public comment section of this agenda and this agenda item and bring it back before the commission at this point to discuss. So, Margaret, your commentary on this, please. Your thoughts?
That, to me, the best part about the whole project is that the applicant made sure that their neighbor's views and light was going to be respected and preserved. And I think that they really deserve to be commended for probably changing their design a number of times to accommodate other people, which I think is just really great. It's great for the neighbors and it's great for the whole feeling of the neighborhood. And other than that, I think that I don't have any problem with the design, and I would approve it. I can make all the findings.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rizzo, your thoughts on this application?
Well, I'm happy to see that, that the proposal meets all, meets all the R1 standards. They're well with under the height as well. I know that, that sometimes this gets, gets difficult to, to develop and create creative spaces. I'm very happy with the community outreach. I think maybe at a later date, the commission should talk about the views out of secondary and primary view, view spaces, because I think it makes a big difference on how projects can be masked visually. Because sometimes they get, they become a little bit unbalanced. This one in particular from the street does not, you know, most of the mass is on the side, which you can't see. And I agree, from the back, it's, it's attractive as well. So I, I think I could make the findings as well to approve this project.
Okay. Thank you for that. Dr. Bundy?
I think this is a nice design. I think it fits in with other second stories in the neighborhood, and I can make the finding.
Okay, simply said. Phyllis, your thoughts about the house?
I think it's a very well-thought-out design. The time that an effort shows that you put into it, and I commend both the architect and the property owners. It fits in with the neighborhood. I find most of the second stories on the homes in this neighborhood are over the bearing walls to keep the cost down, are off to the side, and this fits right in. And obviously, I like the colors.
Very good. Thank you. I myself think that the second story here from the street is about as diminutive as it can be for a second story. And I think it's placed well, and I was surprised when I saw the story poles how little impact there is on the neighborhood of the height. So it's, it's a well-thought-out, well-designed addition. And also, I agree with the other commissioners. To be commended for getting such enthusiastic support from all your neighbors. And it's worth a lot. I wish that other applicants were able to put themselves out there for it, whether they hear good news or bad news. It's great that you do. I hope if anybody's listening with their potential application, they say, aha, that's how we get approved, just kidding. So it's important, and you clearly got your neighbors enrolled, so that's great. So I can make all the findings for this application. So at this point, I would say we simply need a motion from someone on this application.
I don't think any of us printed it out that we could read it. That's one of the problems having Zoom meetings, we don't get paper, paper court. Margaret, did you give us the info we need to make the, I'll make the motion if you give me the information for it.
Here, I got it in front of me. So this would be resolution number 20006. This is PL 2020-0013-DRC, but resolution number 20006 in the matter of a major design review application to add 723 square foot second level and to add 241 square foot to the first level of a 1796 square foot single story home at 38 Birch Avenue.
Do you want that to be the motion, or shall I just say, I move, I will make the motion of what Peter just said? How's that to be casual about it?
Yeah, and then a second. Okay, then we have a vote.
Commissioner, sorry, let me start this, Commissioner Bundy? Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Okay, that's a yes. Commissioner Mendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Martha, do you want to read the appeals?
I don't have them in front of me, but anyone is able to appeal the project. There's a 10-day appeal period, which will end on July 24th, and the cost to appeal a project is $300, and forms are available by contacting a town employee.
Good enough, it's a $300 filing fee and must be filed within 10 calendar days.
Pro forma.
Peter, may I, may I make a suggestion for the future? Because I don't know when we're going to meet in person again. When you print out the plans to deliver to us, print out the resolution and send that along with the plans, even though the rest of it is, you know, online.
All right, thank you. All right. Applicants, thank you so much, good luck with this. Now you got to go get a building permit. That's the hard part.
Thanks for all your help and attention.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.
Okay.
Thanks Martha.
Good night.
So that will close out our new hearings for tonight. We have a lot of old business to go over based on things we've skipped over. But first, on reports and announcements, there were three different meetings to report on, I think since we were last together. And I was responsible for the June 9th Commissioner, Council Meeting. Someone else was responsible for June 16th, and then I listened last week to the meeting. So June 9th, I think that the significant element that was on that town council agenda was the fact that they heard the, or they were, you know, second reading, I believe, was it not Adam, for the hotel resolution to?
It was actually the first reading of the hotel on the 9th, and then the second reading on the 16th.
Got it, okay. So I think that the council was all in support, they all voted for the ordinances we passed it without any amendments or changes to our recommendation for that approval of it. So if it weren't for COVID, I'm sure that we'd see somebody in line with an application. And maybe they'll sell the TD warehouse building, I don't know. But I don't think there was anything else of significance. Adam was responsible for telling the council about the temporary street space use for restaurants, and everybody agreed to that. Anything else you want to add about that meeting, Adam?
No, I was gonna, I was going to do a little bit of a report on the, the temporary encouragement permits and use permits, so if I can make my report.
All right, so we'll come back to that. So I don't recall who had the next council meeting to cover.
July, July 21st? June 16th.
June 16th.
I thought you meant the next one, sorry. That was the introduction of the amendment to the tree ordinance, and also an introduction of an ordinance, EV charging station streamlined ordinance. So there are two, two additional ordinances that were introduced on June 16th. The tree, basically the amendments to the tree ordinance were related to aligning our permit process with the fire prone species list that the fire department uses in terms of their evaluation. There was some discussion about whether that was appropriate or not, but ultimately, I think Ruben Martin, who, if you, if you're not aware, he's the new fire chief, who's been promoted from fire marshal to fire chief now. But he is, you know, he, he understands sort of the concerns that were raised, and ultimately, he's not recommending, you know, he, he doesn't go in with the idea that these trees need to be removed, it's sort of a last resort, but this does give the needed flexibility for, for them to take quick action in the, if needed, to remove a tree that's fire prone in their view. But ultimately, that will be decided upon by the fire code official, which is, which is really. EV charging station streamlined ordinance was just a, it's actually going to get the town in compliance with state law regarding just fast tracking those, similar to solar permitting. And so that was introduced and then adopted on last week. And sort of puts the town in line for some potential funding for installing those charging stations in town.
Okay. On Ju, July 7th, I listened to the meeting last week, and there was a fair amount of discussion about fire prone trees and liquid amber trees. But liquid amber trees are not fire prone trees, they're just root problems. But there was a towns person that wanted the liquid amber trees listed as hazardous trees. I don't think the council was ready to do that. The item that would focus, so importantly, on our actions was item 60, consideration and possible action to approve resolution for extending the lapped date of certain types of entitlements for 120 days. And that was a tie vote, so the resolution did not pass. And I think that that was, the people who voted against it said that it was a response by one applicant to extend their timeline. And the things to talk about on that agenda, I think that's really about it, other than the Redwood Highway Public Pathway, which was approved. But I'm going to let Adam say anything about the extension of the permit. It was, that was brought before the council. Yeah.
Do you want to give out any other commissioner reports, or I'm happy to?
Okay. Does anybody have anything else to report on tonight before Adam gives his report?
Peter?
Yes?
If I may follow through a little bit on what you talked about, the, the bike pad, the, what would you call, I guess they worked on for a couple of years of removing the trees behind Nordstrom and changing that pathway, planting new trees.
Yeah, the Redwood Highway Pathway.
The highway pathway, I wasn't sure of what the name of it was. I was able to pick up a little bit of that, and I noticed that one of the council members brought up the idea of native trees. And I think it should be understood, as much as we want to use native trees and native plants, they have to fit the environment in which they'll be put. And they're not always the best. It could be because the roots of a tree spread instead of going deep, it could be because a plant needs more water than is available in the area. So as much as we want to work with native plants and trees, we should understand that it's not all we do work with. Because I know that became, that became an issue with that particular agenda item.
Yeah, there was, yeah. There was, there was a conversation about that, and I think there was actually a useful sort of, the landscaping company that was associated with that, they talked about native cultivars versus native actual species and what actually does well, and given the soil and other requirements sort of on, on fill, obviously, all the, all the dirt out there is fill on the mark, so that was a part of the discussion as well. So I, yep, and there's been a lot actually of, a lot of relevant discussion over the last three meetings at the council, I think, of the things the lending commission may, may take interest in, but, right, that was, that was one related to landscaping that I thought may be useful, right, for the future discussions regarding plantings and whatnot. We do actually in our design guidelines have a design guideline that talks about encouraging native species, so nothing is mandates it, and obviously, there's also Marin Municipal Water District requirements regarding water schedules and how much water you can use, which sort of is related, it's sort of the way that Marin Municipal Water District sort of gets at the what works here and what doesn't. It's, it's based on how much water they, they should, they, they should receive or not have to irrigate for certain types of species as much. So you want me to move on to?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I think we covered the ordinances. I did want to touch on one in particular that I think has been interesting to see over the last month develop. On June 9th, the, the town council did adopt a urgency ordinance that allowed for the temporary, allowed for temporary permits to be issued, both on public right of ways and public property, and also on private, private property. And for the purpose of essentially allowing existing businesses in town or businesses to expand their capacity outside of their traditional or sort of their, their indoor spaces as the need to sort of respond in the, to social distancing requirements is sort of put, put on these business owners. And so to help, help them do that, the, the town council loosened some of the restrictions that would otherwise apply to those, to those sorts of permits. In particular, one, waiving any fees associated with applying for an encouragement per, a permit, but also sort of outlining a process to allow for restaurants to occupy sidewalks and, and also on-street parking. And so you've seen a couple, a couple of them have been set up, if you're not aware, it'd be, I think it, nice to, for all of you to sort of take a look at Old Cordera Square with the Zins Wine Bar and then Burma Town. And I think we'll likely see one in front of the Lighthouse Cafe as well at some point. But, you know, it's not necessarily the prettiest design from a, but, you know, it's, it's something that was intended to be very quick and efficient in sort of setting up, so you'll see safety barriers out in the, taking over some of the parking spaces, and then some expanded seating opportunities there, and, and we have had really good response from some restaurant owners on that front. In addition, we've seen private property owners wanting to scan into their parking lots, again, private property, but typically, that would not be allowed, one, because our zoning code requires commercial businesses primarily to operate indoors. There's limited exceptions, but, but primarily indoor operation. For example, gyms and whatnot need to be operating inside. But this also allows the occup, these businesses to take over some of the parking spaces that would otherwise be required pursuant to zoning requirements for minimum parking and whatnot. So TJ's Gym up there, also at Cordera Square, The Cave over Tamil Vista Boulevard, they have started to expand their operations outside of their buildings and into parking lots. We've, we also have received recently a request for Marin Joe's, just for some morning, like some of their selling coffee outside in a, in a location that might be appropriate for people stopping by on their way to work. And then more significantly, we're also received an application just this week, and I think Todd mentioned it last, last week, from the Lark Theater to operate a drive-in theater over at the Village North Lot, which is actually a town owned, as you know, it's still a town owned property. And so that was, we're working on that application, but the expectation is they would operate starting July 23rd, movies three times a week out there. So that will probably be, you'll see that coming across probably, you know, the IGA and other things in the coming week. But it's something obviously that, you know, is a, another way during this time to sort of allow for entertainment and also support, while not a Cordera business, although they are, they are applying for a business license in Cordera, but a, a local institution that obviously is, would need some support during this time. So they're actually operating right now in the Bon Air Shopping Center. They've been doing, I think they have three movies there, so we'll see that, they'll, they'll shift on from Bon Air and really move more significant, significantly over to the Village, that north parking lot. So it's been a successful program. We also have done on our own, closed about seven parking spaces at Menke Park, and turned those into seating for small groups or people that want to take their pizza to go and sit, you know, from Stefano's or a glass of wine from Zins or what have you, or a meal from Lighthouse and just sit over in Menke Park. This is a little bit of an expanded seating area that doesn't sort of impact the small Menke Park sort of grass areas that are used sometimes by other folks, and we've seen some success there. As part of that, we applied for a grant, a $20,000 grant from Transportation Authority of Marin to support that program, and I think we're, we're hopeful that that actually will receive that. hopeful that that actually will receive that. And so those are a couple of things that were, you know, are a little bit unusual, I think, for the planning commission and myself. You know, some of it is, it's actually, it's actually an interesting time to just see how that works. It probably would have been much more difficult when parking demand was higher to sort of try these things, especially in Old Cordera Square, where I think, in talking to a lot of the business owners down there, they think that the parking down there is, is their own personal parking rather than sort of the public parking. But nonetheless, I think they all see the opportunity here to actually draw some more people into the area than would otherwise come and create some energy. So that's, I just wanted to report on that. I don't really have much to report on from last week, other than, you know, there was a discussion about extending permits, expiration dates, and in particular, it related most significantly to the 159 Prince Royal Project. So that's the one that Chairman Chase was just referring to. It was deadlocked at two to two, so it did not pass. And so if that project was to go forward, and some of you were around for that project as commissioners, that a new application would have to be applied for, a new design review application would need to be made at this point. So no, nothing else to report from last week, other than the council has, there'll be no, they've canceled the next two council meetings. And so that's the next one, I think, July 21st and August 4th are canceled. And I think Todd and the council are encouraging everybody to sort of try to, try to relax a little bit if they can and take a little bit of a break. It's been, you know, everyone's been charging pretty hard and trying to adjust to this new dynamic that we're all facing. And so that's what, you know, I'm encouraging staff here to do. And, but, but we also actually just by, the schedule also has us, we don't have any items for the July 28th Planning Commission meeting at this point. So our expectation is that we would cancel that meeting. And we'll, we'll see about the August 11th meeting at this point. But just to give you an update on the next couple of meetings there. So work is continuing. There's climate adaptation meeting, I think, at the end of the month. There's a lot of meetings, ongoing meetings related to Plan Bay Area and the regional housing needs assessment and housing legislation, which is not slowing down one bit. And so there may be, very well be some new housing legislation this year that has a great impact on local zoning regulations and whatnot. We'll have to wait and see. And maybe I can, you know, by the next meeting, maybe we'll have a little bit more information on that. So with that, concludes my report for today.
Well, thank you, Adam. I am curious, maybe we shouldn't discuss, but I'm just wondering, was there any movement, or is there any legislative movement toward transit housing of late, given the COVID? We haven't heard anything for a while, it seems like.
Well, there's a lot. I mean, yes, there's, it actually hasn't slowed down. It was sort of just in the, you know, a lot of the bills, and Phyllis is probably aware of it, a lot of the bills have been proposed by legislators, so they're now in sort of their committees and going through that process. I, it seems like it has been delayed a little bit because of COVID and just in terms of the legislature and what they're able to meet on. But several bills have been advanced, and typically, we see sort of, August, September is when we start to get a sense of which ones have made it through the legislative process and at least get to the, you know, by September, they're, they're heading to the governor's, governor's desk. But there's still a lot of support out there, as far as I can tell, for a host of changes in, in not only single-family, that would impact single-family zones, but also things that would, again, just make it easier to develop multifamily housing. We're continuing to work on our multifamily housing design guidelines. Phyllis is part of that, and we'll, particularly, we had a meeting media a month, month and a half ago. But, but I would, I would, there was a project in Nevada that I think is really instructive on terms of what can be done with existing housing legislation, let alone sort of the things that are coming down the road. So it's in terms of density bonus and no parking and things like that. Anyways, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's, you know, there's, there's a, it just, there's, the chin come as a surprise, and I think that this has been in the works for many years. And already, there is a lot of legislation that has sort of, has taken away a lot of the local control over some, you know, housing development. But, you know, there's still some things we can do. And at least even forgetting that for a moment, I think it's, it's important that the town focuses on its own housing policies and goals and things that it thinks is right for this community. And multifamily housing is going to be a part of that. So as we do that process, we're also going to be confronting sort of the new housing element numbers and things like that, which we should expect, sort of like double or triple, if not more, housing units that we're going to have to plan for. But that's the fun next, you know, I guess, couple of years in front of us. A lot of housing, I think, the commission should expect. And I'm going to try to lay some of the work plan out probably later this summer. And there may very well be a need to sort of develop some sort of committees on that and whatnot. So.
Okay.
Peter? Peter?
Two hands up here. Start with you, Margaret, yes.
There was one, I also listened to the town council on the last town council meeting, and they passed some kind of new, I don't know, rule or whatever about the way minutes were being taken, and they would affect the hour minutes were going to be recorded also. I wasn't exactly sure of the difference, but it affected all the commissions.
Correct. Thanks, Margaret. Yeah, it was, we're moving to summary action minutes, which is currently, we, as you know, we have sort of a, more of a line-by-line rewrite of, you know, it's, it's summarized in some regards, but it sort of goes along with the conversation. And the idea is, one of the ideas, now that we have a pretty good handle on recording all of our, all of our meetings on video, and we have audio recordings, that moving to summary minutes would be a good thing to, also, it would be a significant cost-cutting measure for the upcoming budget and beyond. We actually do spend quite a bit of money on, essentially, contracting people to write our minutes. So in any case, we are going to move to summary action minutes. But I think there are a couple of requests that the council made, that it wasn't just, there was, make sure that the names of the public who spoke are included in that. And there are a couple other things, but I know Rebecca, our town clerk, is going to be working on, on making that transition happen. It may not happen right away.
I could give a little content for you.
Yeah, some, right, some way to actually identify in the recording of the video, like where, where things happened. She's going to be working on that. And maybe by the time we have another meeting, we'll be there.
Okay, that's very well pointed out, Margaret. Thank you. Phillips, was it?
Yes. Going back to discussing housing and the state, one advantage we have is they are not reopening the legislature as they were this week. They're putting it off another couple of weeks. Apparently, two members of the legislature and some staff members have come down with COVID, so they're being extra careful. But you made reference to Nevada. The chair of the Nevada Planning Commissioner, Commission is a friend of mine, and he said to me recently, referred to this building that is creating all the problems as being their wind cup. It is actually larger than wind cup. It is five stories. It is in the middle of downtown. It is the wrong size, the wrong place, and the design leaves much to be desired. I've seen some of the drawings of it. And it's something to watch, because this company that's coming in that wants to build this, and I think they're out of Southern California, and if they are, I wish they'd stay down there rather than put it up here. They're using every little technicality in the bills that have passed in Sacramento for multi-housing, taking it out of the hands of the local entity, transit housing, parking pro-
Yeah.
They gathered it all together, every one of those bills, and they picked something from every one of them. And this is really something to see, and it's a little bit frightening to see what can happen. They're looking at a downtown, kind of small, medium office building, tearing it down and building this monolith. I'm sure, Adam, you've seen some of the drawings and the pictures.
I can, yeah, I can forward something. Anyways, yeah, we should-
You're providing color.
Keep opinions on the project.
Well, it isn't in Cordera Square. I can say it. It's not a Brown Act violation. I'm not saying in advance, I'm going to vote on a project, so we're okay.
Anyway, okay.
So anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, then I would say we've gotten through reports, announcement, and request. Adam has filled us in on future agenda items, which is nil to none at this point. And I'll ask for motions on the three different sets of minutes.
And I do, yeah, just on that, there was, as you'll note in the agenda, the minutes of April 28th, 2020 are on this list. That was actually originally approved by the commission on 5/26, but did receive a request for a modification to those minutes about a few, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, from Commissioner Metcalf. And so those were proposed to be modified pursuant to a vote this evening on the April 28th meeting minutes. And that was, the modification was related to a comment on the town hall project and just the, what was said regarding potential other accommodations. I think it was an alternative.
No, it wasn't an alternative. It's while we were working on the project, if necessary, to rent other office space. And it showed up in the minutes as if it was an alternative.
Right.
And that's not what I was trying to say when I spoke.
Right. So I just wanted to clarify that before you vote on the minutes.
I read them, and I didn't know what it was about, why we were seeing them. All right. So we've got three sets of minutes. Does anyone have any proposed changes to any of the minutes at this point?
No.
So can we pass them all with a motion?
All right, I'll move that we passed all three sets of minutes on the dates.
April 28th, May 26th, and June 23rd. Somebody second that, please? Somebody did? Okay, so.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that said, I hope everyone is, as we say, staying safe. Carry your hand sanitizer, carry your mask with you, you know. I use it as aftershave. And, you know, it's a pleasure to have these meetings. I wish we were meeting in person, but I don't know when that'll happen. No one knows when that'll happen again. So. So while I've got everybody live lined, Tracy, I got your email, but I've not received any of those documents, so.
Haven't sent them yet. I will send them in the morning. We're including the one from tonight, that's why.
Ah, great. Okay. Thank you. So with that said, I adjourn this meeting. Good night.
Good night.
Be well, everyone. Take care.